Good evening and welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for May 3rd, 2016. We currently have six members of the commission present. Commissioner Sikowski is presently absent. For everybody in attendance tonight, if you would kindly silence any electronic devices that you might have, this meeting is being recorded for the public record. Diving right into our agenda, we have one item on our consent calendar which is the minutes from our April 19th meeting. Commissioner Queen?
I move to approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Queen, second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion with the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. This brings us to our first public hearing this evening, which is the Maverick Convenience Store, considering a preliminary site plan and amended subdivision plat in SC-1 Zone, 700 South and 1300 West. Better City Mallory Brass is the applicant. So, you don't look like Mallory.
I don't, and thank heavens I don't. My name's Rick Magnus with Maverick, and I'm here to help represent. Of course, Mallory is here in support as well, so thank you.
Well, let's start off, let's begin.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, and I first want to mention, it has been a bit of a privilege, and we appreciate staff working with us to have this opportunity and have this application here before you this evening. And we have a bit of a presentation, and then I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have. But we have, just over here on the screen, we wanted to identify, first of all, give you kind of a frame of reference where our site will be located, where that red pin is, just where Center and 78th come across, and we're right there on the northeast corner there. And we'll get these hand signals down by the end, but here's our general site plan, where we actually have an opportunity to take advantage of this corner. You will see that, and if I could briefly explain Maverick and our bit of business plan, is that we look to provide greater parking than necessary, and greater drive aisles, and opportunities for fueling, as well as experiences within the store. Our business plan, we try to model our stores where we make about 50% profit on the fueling, and about 50% on the non-fuel items, which means come into the store and have a great experience. We have started to have Cinnabon in there as part of the experience. You'll notice also that we have outdoor dining, covered outdoor dining, and outdoor entrance will also be, a pedestrian entrance there to the west will also be available, so that a pedestrian just has the opportunity to kind of walk in there, may not have their vehicle to walk right in the front of the store. We've taken advantage with the setbacks and the dedications that we've worked with staff, so that in the future, there's opportunities for expansion for the city with regards to traffic, and our ingress and egresses, well, of course, they're backed by having a bit of a traffic study and understanding that, and the ability to have that onsite. Our stores, this is just showing in relationship to the existing, you know, proposed development, especially to the east, you'll see that we have a continuation of the street to the north that is going to connect to, there's not going to be, you know, a perimeter wall or anything that might not allow this connectivity to continue. We know that in Gardner Village, that's one of the important things about the community. We also, we'll talk a little bit about also the fencing in a little bit, but here's a look at some of our elevations that we provide. Of course, the front of our stores, automatic doors when you come in, we actually provide paving that actually comes up to the sidewalk of the front of the store. In the past, we've had a bit of tripping hazards, and so to try and avoid that, we make it the nice even flow for the pedestrian once it pulled up to the building itself. In our design review committee last week, we had a great suggestion to kind of stop the entire single color to the rear of the building, and I wanted to just point this out, we had addressed some of that, those vertical features, and trying to break that up a little bit as we went along. So, we were able to revise that a little bit, and now give kind of a break in that back, those back features there. So, and of course, on the side, one of our sites has that pedestrian entrance as well, that provides, and if you can imagine, also on this pedestrian side, we have the covered picnic tables, so that someone can kind of step out and enjoy what they have, hopefully purchased and continue to purchase in the store, right? Let's see, if we can go here, and then, of course, I wanted to explain a little bit about our landscaping. Our landscaping conforms not only to code, but also to the area itself. We've allowed quite a bit of a buffer along both street frontages. Something else that we've done, and we will get to this, is that over on the west side, we've allowed for a wrought iron fence rather than a solid fence, so that there is a continuity between the apartments there and also ours, that's kind of visual, that softens that buffer that sometimes is created. And then we've tried to internally, when we look at landscaping, we also landscape right around that outdoor dining, kind of soften that hardscape a little bit, if you will. Here are just some of the things that we looked at. We were challenged a little bit by staff to kind of look at if we're incorporating some of the things that are already in Gardner Village, and I have to say is that it's kind of a good moment for I, and of course Mallory and others, to look at what we are providing, and how much we kind of look like we were actually conforming to some of the design features that are provided or already there in Gardner Village. In the center is Gardner Place, and you can see they're using timbers and doing some work on their columns and that, and then, of course, to each side is the front entrance of Maverick, which we use a combination of different materials, but very similar to what already is in Gardner Village, and of course, the treatments on the columns as well. Here's some of the trellises and outdoor seating. In the center is, of course, and to the right is what's already existing in Gardner Village, and once again, it's something that we repeat with our design, especially with that outdoor dining and the trellises that are occurring just to the side of our building, that we provide now for each and every one of our stores. Here is, these next few are about lighting, but of course, to the right is Gardner Place again, and their lighting, and then also what we're proposing. Now, I do have to mention to you that what we have started to do is also include LED lighting, lighting, and not this bulb type, because we're finding that the bulbs tend to walk away, it's amazing how they do that. And then also, we've had a few youth just kind of just take some target practice with their backpacks and that. So, we're figuring that out, but this was the most recent that we had. This actually being in South Weaver is an existing site, and so far, they've been okay. But, so, we do understand the importance of different variations of lighting itself, that are a continuity of what's already happening in Gardner Village. And I think we also have, we provide like, you know, gooseneck fixtures, or downlighting, softening, just a dark contrast to that, but it's not washing away the inviting light that's occurring inside, that becomes inviting to one that's kind of coming up to that structure. So, we've been able to do that. Here is just a point of a South Weaver, we've done some wrought iron fencing around the outdoor dining. Is it going to be exactly this type along the perimeter? I can't tell you that tonight, but it will be something that is transparent as far as being able to blend the two, the existing, you know, the apartments, and then also what we have with our site. So, that is, that's the importance of this, is to just demonstrate that we are not having a perimeter fence that is not able to be seen through. So, that was really important, and of course, we are extremely, we look at this as a great opportunity to develop in West Jordan, especially in Gardner Village, in that we're here just to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, any questions?
I'll have one. Will you talk about your traffic study on the entrance exit on 1300 West?
Yes, and so 1300 West, what we realized in our traffic study is, first of all, we needed to push it north, and as we pushed, as we went north on our side, this was going to allow for a full access movement to be, you know, to have that opportunity to do that. If you look also, a couple of things that helped with that was the dedication of that extra right away on 1300 West. You'll see that we dedicate a little bit more there. And then also, as we looked at where we were located, and also providing another opportunity for adjacent property owners to have that east-west flow, it was something that was, you know, we looked at that as far as what traffic we generate, and then also what would be, what would also benefit kind of the surrounding developments. And then finally, as we start to look at some of the flows and access of some of our service vehicles, even the deliveries, they'll be made on that kind of, that north entrance along 13th, and they'll come in, they make a turn, and there needs to be a wide enough commercial drive aisle there, so that it can allow for them to come in. And of course, probably you'll see all those, you know, the deliveries to the rear, and of course, that's how they service also the trash that's there too. So, we saw that not only was this a benefit a bit to allow people to make different turning movements, but it was, that traffic study supported that idea.
Is there a set time of day that most of those, either C-store or fuel deliveries happen?
It happens, we have, not necessarily.
Does it happen at 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday?
No, it doesn't. No, you will see it on what are typically off-hours for traffic, and those deliveries are done definitely out of the way. So, once again, I'll go back to a bit of the site design. We, so we, our drive aisles are pretty darn wide, we like them wide. People like having separation from like their fueling stations and the drive aisles and all that. So, we looked, our sites, if you've watched Maverick over the years, have expanded the site, and we start to get more room for mobility of vehicles, and also it seems to be a lot safer environment when those vehicles show up. But most of our deliveries now are going to be to the rear, which is going to be great for keeping that out of there. And then they'll loop around and come back out, so.
Okay. Commissioner Hanson?
I just want to mention the third production grade that you called on the rear. I think that makes it much better looking building on the rear, which is a completely different one, just that.
Well, thank you for that suggestion. That was taken into heart, and we appreciate that comment, we do. Thank you.
Commissioner Hahn?
Thank you. I just had a question on the future driveway that showed here in the back. Is that part of the Maverick property then, or will the deliveries be done back there?
The future driveway built back here?
Yeah, on the north side?
No, that'll be installed with the development.
Okay.
See, actually, the property line.
That's what threw me off.
Yeah, the property line is actually right at this hard line, and this is paved along the end line for Questor, so it's actually pulled this way. And I think, yes, this will be paved, and then it will go through to the Colosimo Development, so it will be a full access through.
So, that will be used by the Colosimo Development as an ingress and egress also?
Yes, it will also be another driveway.
And doesn't that, that north street, for lack of a better term, it ties into the one that comes in from Colosimo's project that goes in from, that heads north, right? Their entrance and.
There's actually.
It ties into their parking lot, doesn't it?
Yeah, and then Kelvin, there's actually another driveway farther to the north also. So, there'd be two drive approaches, and then one off 78 South, and then, of course, I believe they put the bridge over the canal at this point.
So, then the delivery is going to be in the back, correct?
No, they'll come through and they'll be able to come in from here.
Right, but they have to stop back here to deliver the.
And so, Bill, to answer your question, the fuel delivery will probably come in a matter, because the tanks are out here.
Right.
And then they'll come back out, either this way or make a right out. They won't be trying to make a left, the big tanker trucks under 1300, and then the delivery of food and other products will be at this location back here.
How is that going to affect the ingress and egress of the additional traffic that comes from the Colosimo property?
I don't think it will at all, because they will pull, there's a, like a 12-foot air.
Get a truck in.
Yeah, a 12-foot air, but they can pull in here, and this road is actually 36 feet wide.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
No, thank you. I'm here to answer any questions, so thanks.
Thanks. Anything you want to add to that, Larry?
No.
I do have a question. Are we, on this, on that street, for lack of a better term, to the north, is it required to have a sidewalk?
No, it's not. And we've gone, we've gone over that, and the way of facilitating this is, this walkway, as you can see here, will connect, and then connect either this way or around the building. But it's not a city-owned street, so we've gone over that, right?
So, the pedestrian path is that little, it's there, and it's the other doohickey to the west.
Yeah, and what we felt.
That one right there.
With this.
That's the pedestrian path from 13th, is that what that is?
And we looked at a sidewalk along the entire back, but then we felt, well, we're putting people, we're dumping them right into the line of fire here, and so we felt like moving them to the south, and then either weaving around the building was a much safer approach to the sidewalk.
Commissioner Hahn?
Oh, thank you. And then just a follow-up from Commissioner Green's comment. Since the pedestrian access will cross the vehicle drive, as the staff pack it mentions, it'll be clearly marked. I'm just curious what is put in place, what is clearly marked?
It'll be a different material, a different colored material, it'll be textured like we do, and all the, those type of, it's usually raised a tiny bit somewhat, you know, not to the point where it becomes a hazard, but it's a different color and a different material, it's just not the asphalt.
And it's at the point where people would actually cross, you know, the most convenient, like how water goes to the path of least resistance, just for safety?
Well, that's the theory. You know, people are going to make the path where, you know, but we've, the sidewalk basically ends at this point right now, and so everybody's, you know, either going to be walking this way or this way.
Great, thanks. We don't need flags or anything, you're just going to raise the pedestrian walkway.
And these, you know, when you look at them on a site plan, they're like, oh, it can be hazardous, but people are generally, generally, not everyone, but most people are traveling at safe speeds when they're in a parking lot, especially small with lots of turns.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Fantastic. This being a public hearing, anybody who would like to comment on this item would be invited up to the microphone if you would kind of give us your name and contact information, and the event city staff would like to follow up with you on your comments, and you would have three minutes to make those. That is now over. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Hanson?
I'm ready.
Stand by, Commissioner Green. Comments?
I have a couple of, I have a couple of comments on this project, mainly for the developers. I was approached by a neighbor several weeks ago, was talking about this project, and just maybe as a suggestion, as you look at the patio area, the side of the store actually is on, I think it was an old Bishop storehouse or something, I don't remember, but I don't remember the history of the corner, but there was something there. That may be something that as you build the patio, you might want to look at just putting something that says, hey, we're on the side of this, and add a little history to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it was a button. They made buttons.
That what it was. It was something historical that was tied to.
The buttons, that's great.
Anyway, just a suggestion, that that may, that may, you know, enhance the open eating area a little bit, just with a plaque or something.
Thank you.
My second, my biggest concern with the entire project, as I look through the packet and everything, is the sign. And we talked about it in the pre-meeting, and I know that the sign is within code, but that will be the only, when you look at the gateway, and so this is, this is, for me, as somebody, I live just down the street from there, this is the only place in the city where the city will, where we'll have a gateway into the city. 90 South doesn't have any until you get clear in the head pass down to Home Depot. This will be the only place we have a tall sign coming into the city. And my concern is, is that if you put up a 20-foot sign, guess who's going to put a sign in a kitty corner to you, and that's going to be Chevron, and then next guy down the street's going to want to put in a sign, because he doesn't want to be outdone by Maverick and Chevron. So, I know it's within code, I can't vote against it, I can't, I can't vote against this project because of the sign, but I would somehow, if you guys can look at sign design and not put a 20-something foot monstrosity out there on the street, that, it might add to your context and your contextual design. I used to work at UDOT, and we always talked about context-sensitive designs, and I just think that your sign is not context-sensitive, and if you could take a look at that to make it more context-sensitive, that would be, I think that would enhance your reputation and your visibility in the community.
Thank you, and may I say for the record that we will take this comment, and, well, both, and I think we could easily accommodate, you know, the first, but internally, I will need to just take it back and see what we can do, but it will be a consideration, and I will communicate that back, the result and just the thought process behind that, if you don't, if that's all right with you, Commissioner Green. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't mean to interrupt, but I thought I would answer those for you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, and the commission received in this meeting, and the final finding, I would like to send up the following conditions.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Heiner. Any discussion with the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Take that other one.
On the amended subdivision?
Yes, please.
Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and information received during this meeting, I move that the planning commission approve the amended subdivision plat for the station in Gardner Village located at the northeast corner of 78 North South, 1300 West, with the three conditions listed.
I'll second that one too.
Two conditions.
Two, I'm sorry, two conditions.
I'm getting two, okay.
I'll second that also.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Heiner. Discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item on our agenda, Loneview West Land Use Amendment and Rezone, considering a future land use map amendment. There's the other one. Oh, and a rezone from medium density residential to, to medium density residential, from LSFR there, to R18C. Peterson Development, Barrett Peterson. Please, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. My name's Justin Peterson, 225 South, 200 East in Salt Lake City. I'm here in Barrett's stead. I'll be brief, this is a, this is a bit of an infill piece that the LDS Church, I think, received in kind donation for, and they put it out on the market. It's near their state center, they have a vested interest in what goes in here, complements their state center location, and with what they want to see done with the property that they're selling. With that said, they've endorsed our plan, which is technically in the medium density range, but in reality, it's basically, it's almost completely consistent with the lots all surrounding it, the, that are, though technically in the WSBA, and we're asking for an R18 zoning, the lot sizes are virtually negligible. I think it's less than a half a percent difference in size. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we feel this is a consistent use of the ground there by the church and the surrounding neighborhood, and does not put any undue stresses on the neighborhood, and meets all the criteria that staff seems to support as well. So, with that, happy to answer any questions, or I can return to my seat.
Any questions for the other one? Like we have any, little one, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to you, Larry.
Okay, and so, as Mr. Peterson said, this five-acre side is right on the corner of 8200 and 6700 West, excuse me. It's surrounded by, well, the Highlands is actually up in this area. Loneview South surrounds the development. Over here is all the Jordan Hills Villages project. You see, this is an aerial, and this is the state center. Loneview South, I believe the commission heard last meeting, will actually be homes along this side of the property, and then, of course, in this area. I put together a little bit of a, you know, a comparison of lot sizes in the area, and you can see that they're approaching about 8900 square feet. Loneview South is 9200, but of, there was amenities with that, or buy-ups, you know, the wash area, different type of home styles. It's associated with the Highlands and the WSBA. But as you can see, it's, it's, be larger than anything in Jordan Hills Villages, and then it's, you know, about 1,000 square feet smaller than Bloomfield Farms that I reviewed, which is an R18 zone also. And, you know, just like the discussion we had, 8,000 is a minimum size. This is what Peterson is proposing to do, simply just a turn here, you know, that will connect into Loneview. There'll be no accesses onto either street with this development. It'll all be dependent upon the street that will be built for the Loneview development. And that's basically all I've got. It's just a simple request to amend this portion of the land use map, if we can get back there from low density to medium density, and then change the zoning from an LSFR, which is only applicable in the Highlands now, to an R18. Staff supports this, and recommends the planning commission send a positive recommendation to the council.
Any questions for Beth? Wow, all right. This is also an office of public hearing. If there was anybody who would like to comment on this particular item, the time is now yours. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Green?
Can you go back to the map that has the square footage on the lots? That one? I guess with the one, there's only about 300 square feet difference in it. The other ones, there's about 1,000.
Between Loneview.
Yeah, I'm looking at the one that's immediately to the east.
Bloomfield Farms.
There's one that's 9231, and another one that's 9888, the average.
Yeah, this is Bloomfield Farms, which is, I think it came in a little bit after Jordan Hills Villages, and then Loneview South, and then Loneview North, you can see it's a, which is being constructed right now, and actually is sold out. It's about 1,000 square feet per lot larger.
The Loneview North that's averaging 7840, is it, what's it zoned at now?
It's LSFR.
Oh, it's LSFR.
Yeah, it's in the Highlands master park, so. Yeah, it's in the Highlands master plan, so.
I don't know, I just hate small lot sizes. It just seems like we keep, keep putting too many, it, I, I don't, you're, you're shaking your head, Commissioner Hanson. It just seems like we're putting lots of small lot sizes in and I know it maximizes profits, particularly when you have to build streets and everything, but, I don't know, it just seems like some of these, a lot of the eight-thousand-square-foot lots tends to, I know these will, these will, you know, they're sea houses and I just, I don't know. Nothing, it probably, I mean, it meets the requirement of the, the code, but-
Well, in general, I agree with you, I don't know, I don't know that I see the value in sinking half-acre lots on this.
I don't get, well, and I, I, that's, that's it, I'm not sure that you could put half-acre lots right across the street from the church with, with whatever's gonna go on the street to the north. I, it's ju- it's more of a fundamental philosophy that I keep, I, I think that we keep putting in too many R one eight neighborhoods in, and that's just a philosophical thing as opposed to any other thing about this particular project, but-
Consider this one an R one eight point eight.
R one, yeah. We don't have an R one nine. Do we have an R one nine?
Well, thank you, just echo the sounds of Commissioner Green, especially with this being a quasi-judicial application and fits the parameters of the ordinance that we're reviewing, approval probably made, I would presume. But I'd just like to note that for city councils, they are looking at this, that it is our concern and hopeful, and hopefully that they would review that, that it is our concern, but when we get many applications such as these, that we tend to digress away from density of a bigger, than a eight-thousand-square-foot lot. If they would, uh, like to consider our concern, it seems to be a concern we're, we're having of the, the trend, which again, as Commissioner Green happily stated, it has nothing to do necessarily with this particular development, it's just the overall trend in particulars.
Well, and that, that seems like the trend for the entire west side is R one eight or higher density. And I think we've talked about destination city versus coming in and moving out city and-
Yeah. So, so long as that's noted in the, in our minutes for Planning Commission to read, in, in bold, please, Julie, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Uh, I would just ask, um, I, I realize that the Highlands, um, was grandfathered under the, uh, WSP. But in the future, when Peterson is developing other properties that they consider larger, uh, lot sizes, um, we don't want to become a city of eight-thousand-square-foot lots. We would like to, to be able to have third acres, some half acres, people, there is a demand for them, whether developers believe that or not. I get too many calls asking why they can't find them. And so I would ask, once you're through with the Highlands and, and you have the ability to do these sized lots, um, even though this is within the Highlands, um, that you would, would look forward to doing some larger lots so that we can attract that type of development. Because I think we've become a city of a cheap place to live due to the fact that we offer small lots and they're cheaper to buy. And I really would like to see us, as we move west, we have a great opportunity to make our city a much better place. So I would just politely ask you to consider that. Thank you.
While you entertain a motion? Commissioner Heiner?
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commu- commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the general plan, future land use map for five-point-oh-one acres of property located at approximately sixty-seven-hundred west, eighty-two-hundred south, from low-density residential to medium-density residential.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heiner, second by Commissioner Quinney, discussion to the motion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Based on the information and findings set forth in this staff report upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the, uh, zoning map for five-point-oh-one acres located at approximately sixty-seven-hundred west, eighty-two-hundred south, from, uh, low-density single-family residential to R one eight C. Uh, single-family residential, eight-thousand-square-foot lots, C-sized homes.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Heiner, second by Commissioner Quinney, discussion to the motion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Uh, Chairman Loz, may I, uh, bring just about something I should've tried previously?
Sure.
But it's not against the vote. Uh, when we looked at, um, at Peterson Development two weeks ago, there was a gentleman here very concerned about the use of eighty-two-hundred south construction traffic. And I think this also will become a problem on eighty-two-hundred south if they use the, that for the construction traffic also.
Yeah, I think you wanted to go down eight second, come around the other side from the-
I think they wanted, what, sixty, sixty-fourth or sixty-seventh?
Yeah, they wanted to limit the construction traffic to sixty-seven-hundred west.
Yeah, rather than using eighty-two-hundred.
Yeah, I know Nate was looking at that, when they do their-
It was, it, the, the vision on sixty-four hundred, they gotta get to sixty-seven, I equate with eight second.
Yeah, yeah, or they can come from seventy-eighth, but during the pre-con, we'll discuss, I'll, I'll bring that up at the meeting with the-
Thank you.
Okay, and as discussed in our pre-meeting, uh, to give the, uh, our, uh, our legal counsel an opportunity to, uh, vet some questions with the author of our wall art, uh, application, we're looking to continue this item yet again to our June seventh meeting. So I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Loz, second by Commissioner Hanson, discussion to the motion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to zero.
Five, five, five to one.
Sorry, five to one, thank you. Can't count. Um, so moving on, this next one's a lengthy one, uh, gonna require a lot of debate, I'm sure. Uh, considering, uh, adding the, the word, uh, data to section thirteen dash two dash three. It's all yours.
Uh, to be respectful of your time, do you have any questions for me?
I don't know, can we explore that word, data?
Yeah, the data, the word data.
Yeah, I do.
Is this plural or is it singular?
When you say tomato, I say tomorrow.
When he said be respectful, he was trying to give us a chance to-
Shut up.
Speed is a long-
Oh, gotcha.
Not all these stand-up comedians.
Well, I, I kind of agree with this because in my mindset, when you think of a warehouse, it's different than, uh, data or data center, it's more like a place to store things. And so I, I don't have any problem changing from warehouse to a data center, it's no problem.
And I guess I'll chime in here a little bit. So, data, data centers typically have, uh, far less employees than, than even warehouses. Um, and so, um, the precedence has already been, been set, uh, with, we have Oracle Data Center out west. And, uh, when that, that particular data center came in, we used the, the current definition of warehouse and, and that was sufficient. As we've been entertaining, um, well, as you know, we live in a, a digital age and, 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 uh, all of our smartphones and computers and stuff, that they demand the, these data centers scattered across the country. And so, as we continue to get more requests, uh, for these particular developments, uh, as we've worked with these different, uh, corporations, they've indicated that, um, it would be nice if we specifically, uh, clarified that data centers were included in the definition of warehouse. So, that, that's why we have it here.
Any questions for staff? We lost our entire audience. We're gonna open the public hearing, you wanna come comment on data centers? It'll look like it. Uh, then we'll close the public hearing and discuss further. Commissioner Quinney?
Uh, based on the findings set forth in the staff's report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed tax amendment amendments to Title thirteen as addressed in this report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Quinney, second by Commissioner Loz, discussion to the motion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And our last one, um, section thirteen dash five C, uh, amending the permitting procedures for developmental plan review. Can we discuss this fairly heavily?
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll just run through this real quickly. Uh, back in, um, March, uh, March twenty-third of this year, the council directed, uh, staff to revise the process in which development plans are reviewed and, and ultimately approved. Uh, specifically, the council, uh, requested to be the approval body instead of the ratifying body, uh, as it relates to preliminary development plans. And so, uh, we were able to, to go through and, uh, this affects several different sections of the code. Um, and whether you're a development plan in a PC zone or PRD or, or even, even the Highlands master plan, this, the, this particular tax amendment would, would affect, um, all of the development plans that, that are reviewed by the city. And, uh, so simply put, the, the planning commission will still be involved in reviewing these, uh, but, uh, if this tax amendment is approved by the council, uh, the, the planning commission will be a, a recommending body, and, uh, final approval would then be made by the city council. Um, whereas right now, they're the ratifying body, which is, uh, uh, required because they are the, uh, the elected body, they're the legislative body, and, uh, they have the ability, the authority to enact ordinance. And, uh, and so, to protect the city and the develop- developers with these development plans, uh, the preliminary development plans are actually, um, um, when they're ratified right now, an ordinance is actually created, regulating the, the density and, uh, the particulars that, uh, refer to that particular development. So, uh, this is more in line and more consistent with other, uh, legislative-type, uh, procedures that the city has. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none, I'll be right back.
All right.
Sorry. In, in the pre-meeting, just to clarify, we did have one, one amendment to what was presented to the commission in the staff report. Page twenty of the legislative, uh, draft under, uh, Street Design, uh, B one E. Uh, the, uh, last, uh, uh, part of that sentence, uh, the site plan and or subdivision plat, uh, we struck that to make it more consistent with, uh, the, the, the proposed purview of the council. So I just wanted to put that on record.
Thank you. All right, well, we open the meeting to the public and close the meeting to the public. And we're super concerned about this further discussion. Commissioner Green?
The, the only, the only thing that I noticed throughout this is, and I'll, I'll just point to that, it doesn't change much, but, um, page thirty-seven in our packet, uh, thirteen, five, J, ten, B two, the highlight, the highlighted area. I'm wondering if there shouldn't be a comma after conditionally approved, but other, because it looks like a series, there are three things. I don't think it changes the intent, but I just wonder if we did, but hey, that's me.
Uh, you conditionally approved those together?
It's approved, conditionally approved or denied.
Yeah.
I just, it's a series, normally you put one comma, you put two, don't you?
Is this an editing issue?
Yeah.
I can make sure that that change is included with the council pack.
End that up in the final. Okay, well then, I will go ahead and make a motion. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for, for the proposed tax amendments to Title thirteen as addressed in this report with the, uh, addition presented on page twenty, uh, B one E, as discussed in this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Loz, second by Commissioner Quinney, discussion to the motion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Anything else that we need to discuss this evening?
No, we're good.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Hanson moves that we adjourn, anybody opposed to that? We stand adjourned until May seventeenth of this year.
Thank you.
You may wanna eat dinner next time.